All right, so we'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Kimball, if you could call the roll.
With pleasure, sir. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
President.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Sure.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Great.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the School Board. We have one item today, and that is with respect to Policy 5.12. There is a clarification that is on the table right now. I don't know, Mr. Horn, if you want to describe what it is that we're dealing with here.
In response to the one remaining issue in front of the court with regard to the petition, language has been changed on page two, line 47, to remove any doubt that the School Board Liaison would be approving things like minutes and reports, which is not their role. So the word "approve" has been replaced with the word "review" in that portion. And then, further, in the School Board Liaison's description of responsibilities, beginning on page four, and in lines 124 through 129, again, clarifying that the liaison, while contributing views and opinions to that group, doesn't have the responsibility nor authority to veto or declare content of work product that comes out of the committee. And those are the two changes that are in the posted version of the revised policy.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. I do think it is important to note that, at least from my perspective, these changes remove doubt, but I would never contemplate nor believe that this language would provide for any such veto in the first place. Do we have any questions? Any thoughts about this? We could go to a motion?
No, I had a question this morning for Mr. Horn, which was whether or not in this policy we need clarification of the fact that the School Board has the right and authority to ask the advisory committees to do specific work that's in conjunction with our strategic plan. There was a little bit of a question about whether we do that. And so, Tom, I just want to forward this to everybody. Tom had sent me an email just now with an excerpt from the policy that I think clarified that a little bit. I don't know whether the Board wants to do that or not, but it seemed to me, as long as the court was clarifying it, we might want to just make clear our right to do so.
But the idea was, certain committees have certain mandated responsibilities from the state, and we can't tell them not to do those, but we can tell them to do things in addition to that.
Right.
Which is, again, fairly clear, I think, from what we say, anyway.
Right.
And historically, the Board has done that in the past.
We have. We have. Because we thought it was important for us to get information and advice from those experts on matters, particularly those that are high priorities in the strategic plan, so that we're aligned with them, as opposed to doing different things than them.
Understood. Again, I would say that if there are certain state mandated activities, of course, the advisory committee would do that, being that they're advisory committees, I would also think we could ask them to do additional things, and that they would do that as well. If there is any doubt about that, and if they're in the current policy, and if anybody would like to suggest further clarifications, I'm happy to entertain that. I don't, since we're here bright and early, we might as well make the most of our day. So, Mr. Horn, do you, what are your thoughts about this as drafted?
As a...
Are you going to circulate this additional email?
Yeah, I was looking to make sure everybody would have access to it.
Okay.
Well, is it a big change? Can you just read it?
So I'll just read it. I've got it right here.
Yeah, not a big change. It is, I'm going to set them up for you.
Okay.
And then you knock them down. I'm going to set it up in terms of where we are. So it's page one, paragraph B. Beginning with the words "these advisory committees," that first sentence would be replaced with what Ms. Carney will read to you.
Okay. Instead, it says, "In addition to performing roles, responsibilities, and functions as may be defined by Board of Education regulations, advisory committees will receive specific tasks recommended by the School Board and coordinated with the School Board's strategic plan."
And it's received from the Board of Education, not VDOE? Because they always talk about VDOE regulations when it comes to things like the Special Ed Committee, so I want to make sure we're not...
Right, those are promulgated by the State Board.
Could we just say, "as required by law"?
We could.
Or is other than "required"? Okay, if we could see that language, I just can't, I can't operate. I'm usually not a visual learner.
Justin, wake up! If you're going to stay out and run with the big dogs, you're going to have to...
Boy, you know, you can't wait for this to be her last meeting, can we?
Yeah, not that hell. Once again, my purpose is just, so long as it's been clarified for us by the judge in this legal matter, we may as well clarify it in our policy as well.
Sure, sure. Okay, here it is.
All right, did you get it?
Did you get it? I would, okay, my, here's my thought. There is a distinction here, and my suggestion would be to refashion this language a bit. In whatever capacity they serve, they are an advisory committee, so they may be advising with respect to certain prescribed activities outside the scope of what we request, but they do so nonetheless in an advisory capacity.
To us.
To us. So, the proposal here, or the language, suggests that there are roles, responsibilities, and functions that are other than advisory. So, what I would say is, I'm going to open this thing for the fourth time. On line 34, it says, "These committees are established to study in detail issues of importance to the School Board." In addition, on the annual basis, the School Board... How about this, then? So does everybody see on line 35?
Mm-hmm.
"On an annual basis, the School Board will give direction for tasks to be accomplished each school year so that the advisory committee's work will be coordinated with the School Board's strategic plan." So that's there. I would say, again, for the avoidance of doubt, the advisory committees shall also conduct any advisory activities otherwise required by law.
So I just put it there instead of...
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. I just...
But doesn't it say that already, two sentences later, where it says, "The committees will also fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees, such as for special education and CTE?"
Mr. Lawrence, I think the sort of legislative history of that statement is that having those committees fulfills the School Board's responsibility for having those committees. And I say that because when we reviewed this policy four years ago, when some other state mandated committees were removed from the mandated list, that was the sentence that was changed by the VSBAs' model policy. So I don't think that sentence says, it was intended to say what you think it says, and we would clarify it otherwise.
But, of course, I think Mr. Lawrence raises a good point. I think that language comes awfully darned close, intent or otherwise, to saying what we needed to say. So could we refashion that to, because, you know, the committees will also, does CTE have required activities, or does it merely, is it merely...
It does.
It does, okay. So, "The committees will also fulfill any state," because that language does talk about the committees exist.
Yeah, I mean, if the state requirement was just...
So I think it's saying that they'll do what they've been told to do, or what they are supposed to do under it. So could they say, "will fulfill any state requirement for..." It's very close.
I mean, to me, if the state requirement were simply that it had to exist, it would fulfill that. If the state then said, "and you need to do X," that would fall under any state requirement as well.
Because we're having this very conversation, we need to clarify the policy, right?
Well, I guess that...
Because we don't understand, I mean, because for the community, they need to understand what this is about, and we do, too. So, I'm not sure how to go about doing that, but there are two issues here. One is the issue of their responsibility to do things that we ask them to do for us, advisors. And the other is a general statement that I think the VSBA intended, which said, "These committees you're establishing are meant to do what the laws, are meant to fulfill your legal obligation to have those committees." And so, maybe it's just a switch-up, wherein the first sentence, "These committees are established to study in detail issues of importance to the School Board and will fulfill, you know, state requirements."
Well, but I think one of the...
Whatever. So that's what they are, and then what they do is, they, you know, I don't know, I'm certainly not a policy expert, but...
But I think, speaking very candidly, I think one of the issues that we face here is that this language, I think, is pretty clear on its face, but there are people who are trying to add meaning to it where no such meaning exists. So I agree, we should be very clear. I think, for example, could we do something on the order of, on line 39, "In addition to providing advice on issues as requested by the School Board, the committees will also fulfill any state requirement for..." See, what I find a little strange here is why we would have language talking about having committees in the first place in our policy about the committees, because that sort of begs the question, they're here, they're now, they exist. So I think Mr. Lawrence is on the right track to refashion that line 39 statement. Or we just, you know, we could add something a little higher, as about what I previously proposed, because I don't just want to pile language upon language here, because then we could create some additional ambiguities, or perceived ambiguities.
Yeah.
But why not just move that one sentence about filling state requirements up to be the second sentence in the paragraph? "These committees are established to study details of importance. The committees will fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees, such as, and then 'on an annual basis, the committee will give directions for tasks to be accomplished.'" Maybe it just looks like the state requirements are subordinate, simply because they're sort of mentioned at the end, as opposed to right at the beginning. I understand about clarity, but we're also dealing with people who are looking to make things that are clear or unclear, so we can only do so much.
Okay. Mr. Horn, I know you're drafting a way to come up with a lucid language that will help us, right?
I'm taking all of your suggestions.
Okay.
Well, so much for lucid.
I can hear his brain going over here.
What you just received was, I think, Mr. Lawrence's last suggestion to reorder the paragraph, which I think accomplishes Ms. Carney's goal of making sure that the word "in addition to" is there, and that was important in our hearing a couple of weeks ago, was to, the word "in addition" is in the order.
That would, just in the second sentence, I would take out "the committees will also fulfill," I would take out "also," just say "the committees will fulfill," period, since that's, you know, possible.
Got it, understood.
Hold on one second, one second.
Removing the word "also."
In the second sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Just taking out the word "also."
Okay.
I think the, it's a little jumpy, because it says, "The committees established to study in detailed issues of importance to the School Board," then it says, "any state requirements," and then it jumps back to, "School Board will give direction." So what about just moving that, the sentence that just got moved up to become the third second sentence?
Move it up one more.
So that it would be, "Committees established to study in detail issues of importance. School Board will give direction annually. Committees will also fulfill state requirements."
That's what it says now.
That's pretty much what it says now.
All right. So let me, let me send, are we having an electronic meeting now by doing this?
I think Chandler here.
That's a joke.
It's a real knee-slamper, yeah.
All right. I do want to get this right. Let's, I really don't like Gmail.
Would it help if we projected?
That would be helpful, yes.
You know?
I can turn the light off.
Yeah, you turn the projector on.
Yeah, you got it, it's coming.
What's that? You're okay. Take a while to warm up.
What if we just made the first sentence really simple, and just said, "These committees are established to study in detailed issues of importance to the School Board and to fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees, such as special ed, career check education?"
Let's do it on the screen, so we can all see.
Yeah, that's where we need to be. And I wouldn't even mention any of those committees by name, because they could come on or off.
Right, yeah, you're right. Leave it that way.
In addition to regulatory tasks, shouldn't we stay with that same language?
I'm heavily in there, all its, your purpose is boom and boom.
It's funny, we've worked on this so many times that when I've been on the board, and it still feels to me like we could slim it down by half, even though we've tried it before.
Again, for whatever reason, this policy is, has been a foster city public schools policy that does not track with the VSBA policy by about 11 pages. I'm not certain of the reason it's as long as it is, but...
Oh, that's so funny. So what I was saying, Justin, was on line 34, "These committees are established to study in detailed issues of importance to the School Board and to fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees," period.
I think one thing, too.
That's what they, that's what they do. And then we take, and then this, on line 39, "The committees will also fulfill any state requirement," we just take all that stuff out, that whole sentence goes. And it's simpler. It says the two purposes up front, and then it says, "On annual basis, we'll give direction," and they'll do their, you know, report, and bloody, bloody, blah.
Okay, recalculating, as your GPS says here. Okay, so what if it says, "These committees are established to study in detail issues of importance to the School Board," in addition to any, in addition to any other requirements that, for requirements, in addition to fulfilling any other requirements for advisory committees that may be established by law, or something like that?
It says that, it just says it more simply.
Yeah.
Fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees. Simple.
And you fulfill state requirements, period.
You and I can understand it.
So whatever they are in the future, if the state changes them, this...
Right.
The, but what is not as clear as it could be, is to say that the state requirements go to subject matter. So I just don't want anything that invests in an advisory committee, anything that could be construed as some sort of macro, non-advisory committee power. So let me, let me think about that.
I'm not sure what you're saying. So talk it through, so I can understand it.
How about something like, "And to address other issues for," in other, it's the, what some of the state law, what law requires, there are certain advisory topics to be addressed. So, how about to say, "And to address other areas for advisory, and to address other topics that may be required by law for advisory committees." In other, the state, the only state requirement is a top, is that you have to look at, you know, certain issues. So what I don't want state requirement to be, I think, as this is teed up here, state requirement is kind of vague as to what you're talking about. State requirement simply means you got to, you got to look at particular, you know, there's certain plans that have to be reviewed, there are certain tasks, or, and to accomplish any other advisory tasks as required by law.
But that would be under, that would be a state requirement, if it's required by law, so...
Right.
I don't see where that gets us anything more. They have to fulfill state requirements.
Because the only thing that you're requiring by law are other advisory tasks. I don't want, what other state requirements are there? So, first of all, "as required by law," I think is a little more general and is a little more clear in terms of it's not just, it's "as required by law," so if there's a flow-down from federal law, we'll do that, too. So that's the first one. So "as required by law" is a better, more general statement. And the second thing is, the only thing is required by law that they'll be doing is providing advice on topics that is required by law. So...
Okay, so fulfill any requirements for advisory committees? Any legal requirements for advisory committees?
I would say, "And to address any other, and to address any other topics as required by law for advisory committees." It's simply, if they have to, if we say, "We would like you to look at A, B, and C," and the law says, "D, E, and F also have to be addressed," they'll address those.
Yeah, to me, that's what this says.
Yeah.
It says it much more simply.
I think that just says it in a hard way.
So what state requirements for advisory committees are we talking about?
Whatever the state requires.
All of them.
Which is to be. Isn't that all that there is?
Well, it's to be, and in some, you have to, you have the responsibility to look at certain things, certain reports, make comments, like on the special ed. They need, they have to comment on the special ed advisory plan... They need, they have to comment on the special ed advisory plan or something like that. I mean, they have, you know, three or four specific things to do, not just to exist.
Okay.
But the point is if, if those things went from four to two, or to zero, they would still have to fulfill the requirement to exist.
And, and those are all outlined in the state requirement, what the state, okay?
Right. And I don't know, I mean, would the federal, how would the feds ever come into a state?
Special advisory is, is the, the whole thing is predicated on?
But not advisory committees. I mean, that's, I don't see how federal law would ever come into an advisory committee.
But, but if we say and to address other issues as required by law, we're narrowing the focus of their activities to focusing on issues. When you say and to fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees?
So we already have, in the very beginning in the general topic, it says, "The school board will appoint citizen advisory committees mandated by Virginia law and regulations of the State Board of Education, and when the school board determines, such groups may usefully provide advice for the school division."
Mm-hmm.
Right? So generally, that's when we have these, right? So here, it's Virginia law, regulation, State Board of Education are the things that apply. So I guess I'm with John, I mean, and I don't want to make a, you know, I spend all day on this, but this sentence is about why these committees are established. One, to do what we want them to do, and they're, and they're established, two, to fulfill our requirement. Maybe you can say, go back to the first sentence, under Virginia law and regulation of the State Board of Education, if you want to clarify it. That's when we would advise, that's when we create these things, right?
Okay, but the only.
And that, but then the law and the regulation are, are what states, what these committees are to do, very clearly.
And, and I agree with that completely, but what I do want to say is that there have been assertions that somehow the fact that these committees are mandated gives them powers over and above that of an advisory committee. I don't believe those statements are grounded in fact or law.
Right.
But I also don't want to have a policy that would give some sort of life to those assertions. So if you.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm trying to guard against.
So, and if you say fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees, somebody could say, well, there are state requirements for oversight of the school board, an assertion that has been made in the past. So if you say to study in detail issues of importance to the school board and other issues as may be required by law, you're narrowing it to saying, whatever else is required by law, it just relates to study of issues. If you say and to fulfill any state requirement, if somebody says, well, there's a state requirement that they do things in addition to being an advisory committee, that language is, is less tight. So all I'm trying to do is simply to say, the school board has things on their to-do list, the law requires other things on the to-do list, and I just want to keep it super laser focused on that. So that's why I want to say, and to address any other issues as required by law for advisory committees, because, first of all, if you want to put on your parsing hat, if you say, well, there are, there are things other than state requirements that, because special education implicates federal law, so as required by law is, is better and tighter there. And in addition, by simply saying all, all that the other outside requirements by law addresses is the study of certain other issues, I think that's tighter. I think this language is too loose, it's too expansive.
All right, so what does it say?
See, to me, saying as other required by law is.
Can keep up with it.
To me, much more expansive, and it's welcoming more purposeful misinterpretation to, to bring in the feds, to say, oh, well, now it's everybody, you know, the feds say this. I mean, what we're dealing with is people who see something that's clear and go out of their way to say it's not, to misinterpret and to say they're right. And I think there's only so much we can do here to fix that. I mean, it's like the question of, you know, do school board liaisons approve minutes? Obviously, our language never said that. And honestly, the people who are, some of the petitioners don't believe it, because they send out minutes, don't send it to me for approval. I don't tell them they should approve, so they obviously don't believe it. And I've never told them that's what our policy says, and yet they still go before a judge and say, well, the policy says X, when they don't believe it. So to a certain extent, I think we're trying to fix something that can't be fixed, because we're dealing with people who purposely misinterpret.
Okay, but, but to take a step back, we have to do what's required by law, right? So if there's, if there's federal law, do we have to come?
Well, so let's talk about federal law.
So, no, just say as required by law, as required by law is as required by law.
In our general, our general paragraph A, it states specifically mandated by Virginia law and regulations of the State Board of Education.
Okay.
And I would say as a policy matter, we don't want to recognize that the feds may give us things, if so, we'll have to change the policy. But the stat, I mean, this kind of the philosophy of school boards is, y'all all can't tell us what to do up there in Washington. We are constitutionally established by the General Assembly of Virginia, not by the federal government. So I don't want to go to the federal government thing, this is about state mandates and about what the school board wants, is what I would say first. The second thing, I get your point, Justin, but I think we can't try to do everything. So I would simply take what we have, the concept we have on line nine, which is advisory committees mandated by Virginia law and regulation of the State Board of Education, which is very specific, and I would take that language and I would pull it down here in this paragraph. Instead of saying any state requirement, I would take that concept and pull it down, to fulfill mandates by Virginia law and regulations of the State Board of Education. And pull it down here, because that gets very specific about what those advisory committees are to do. There's, to do things mandated by Virginia law and regulation of the State Board of Education. How about that?
And what, but, but what else is required by Virginia law but to address certain issues?
I don't get it, I don't know what your point is.
The point, the point is, the point is.
I, what was?
Why are we, the, okay, there are certain requirements in A that, that have to be, there are certain committees that have to be established.
Okay, so I can put the word solely.
That's fine.
I can put the word solely in there, right? They're created to do what we want them to do, and also to do solely what is mandated by Virginia law and regulation of the State Board of Education.
Okay, but, but just.
Where solely means, like, there's anything else out there in Virginia law, they don't do that stuff, because we haven't told them in our policy that they can do that stuff.
As long as we make sure that solely doesn't exclude us from giving them tasks, that'd be my only concern with solely.
Of course, that's the whole point of this conversation, is to make sure that we clarify that we can give them tasks, right? Right?
But you brought this upon us, you wanted to clarify this.
I totally did.
So if you want to clarify, I just want to make sure that, that we're doing this properly. So in section A, it says, "We will have certain advisory committees, those that we want to stand up and those that we have to have." So that's fine.
Yes.
So now that we, now that we have those committees, we move down to section B and talk about, so what the heck are they doing?
Yes.
And they're saying in line 34, we say in line 34, we are doing, the advisory committees will advise us, because that's what we want them to do, and we'll tell them what we're interested in. Now, it turns out, some of those committees in section A are required by law, and they have certain issues that they also have to address as required by law.
Yes.
So then the question comes, so when the time comes every year to ask, to give the, remit to the, to the various committees, so what are you supposed to be doing? Line 34 says, well, we'll tell, the school board will tell them what those issues are. Now, we also have to be mindful of the fact there are certain issues that are required by, by law. So we also are looking at this red language in line 34. To say fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees is, my quarrel with that, I'm happy to stick with state requirement, I don't care about as required by law, even though I think that's better, I'll give that up. But to say, and, and to address any issues, any state required issues for advisory committees, I'm happy to say that, but I think it's tremendously important to say that the only state requirements we're talking about here are, if you have to review a certain plan, if you have to check in on certain thises or that. But if you say any state requirement, if somebody says, well, you know, there's a state requirement that you address, that you have oversight responsibilities.
Okay.
I want to, I want to put the kibosh on that.
Okay, so let's make it, so let's say, instead of fulfill any state requirement, let's say mandate, right? Because that's up in our first sentence and that, so it's consistent, right? So fulfill any state mandate specifically related to advisory committees, or, that's where it's again where you pull down, any state mandate related to the State Board of Education.
Or.
I mean, just, I just take that language and break it down, and then it's, because if that language isn't right here, it's not right up there. If it's right up there, it's right down here.
No, so how about?
Because I don't think we're going to write a regulation that says that the Virginia Department of Environmental Sciences asks for a report, that our committees are going to assume that they have to do that report.
Okay, so, so how about this?
That doesn't make sense to me. So just throw some language up there, how about that? And we'll react to it.
Well, I don't want to have just bloating language here, so I think we can, I think we can do this. So these committees are established to study and deal detailed issues, issues of importance to the school board, as, as well as issues mandated by state law for advisory committees. Does that work?
I don't see what the difference is.
That makes you happy, but I.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I see issues, address issues.
I don't think issues is the right word here.
Yeah, that's easily interpreted.
I think it's really to fulfill state mandates.
And that's it.
And the different committees have different mandates from the state, right? Because there's, because they do. C T has very different mandates than special education.
Which committees actually are state mandated besides the?
A T E, G and T speak.
T T is no longer mandated.
Oh, good.
But we have, you have the option, and they have responsibilities if you have one.
Okay.
So they're very many.
I mean, do we need to specify and fulfill any state requirement for those advisory committees?
That's what I was just going to ask that question was, do we need to, are you looking to?
Yeah, for special ed, you fulfill.
Tighten, so they can only know that?
Just for that.
It's just the requirements by the state for those particular committees, so that they don't then try to overreach and say, well, there's a state mandate for this, so we're going to look at this particular something also, because it's a state mandate, and this has state mandated.
I don't think that, that's going to be too much of a, of a, of an issue. What I'm, all I, all I'm concerned about here is that there's, there are the issues that the school board says in our, in their plan, okay, look at these issues. Now, again, and maybe we should look at the, at the regulations here, just to ground ourselves, but to fulfill any state requirement for advisory committees is, is just a very broad statement.
Let me suggest this, leveraging what Lawrence just said, fulfill any state mandates related to their advisory committee.
Feel any state mandate. Related.
Related to.
Their.
The specific or their, whatever the right word is.
Right, right.
Advisory committee.
Now, Tom, is there a good definition of mandate?
I would say, and to address any state mandated issues, was that word?
I don't know why you're saying that, because that broadens it, and it's really like vague.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, yeah, that goes against what I think you're trying to do.
How about address any state mandated topics?
It's not address, they have to, they have to fulfill state requirements, period.
Mandates is the noun, not the verb.
They have to fulfill them.
I, I see, yeah.
Right? I mean, that's what they're doing, fulfilling a state mandate, that's what they're doing.
And we shouldn't even have to say that.
Related to.
Right.
To the specific.
That's all they're doing. And I think the more you broaden it, the topics or issues or whatever, I think, that's why I added, related to their committee, that's what we're trying to make simple, that says, if you're special ed, then you're going to do what the state mandates you to do related to special ed.
Okay, so here's, here's how I would state the issue. There, there is the, there, there is the horizon of what topics advisory committees opine on, and at the end of the year, what do we want the advisory committee report to talk about? So there is the functional issue of what the advice relates to. Then there are the powers of the advisory committees. Advisory committees exist solely to provide advice. However, some say the fact that a committee is mandated gives it extraordinary powers for an advisory committee. So the only thing I want to make clear, now, now the issue of topics, I, I think goes back to the issue of, we, we talk about detailed issues of importance to the school board. So already saying, issues is there, perhaps that's a problematic word. But we have two things we have to do, we have the things that we want to tell them.
But the state gives them mandates.
Right. Well, but this, but the, and the only mandates from the state are issues. The only mandates from the state are, review this plan every year, do these other topics.
Mandate from the state can be that they exist. I mean, that's a mandate as well.
But that's already covered in A. The, the question is, as a functional matter, what are they, what does state law give them the power to do? And the only thing it does is say, you've got to look at these other issues. If you talk, if you start talking about state requirements for advisory committees, I, I think that's, that opens the door to some suggestion that advisory committees have something over and above the power to just address certain things. You know, at the end of the day, what, Mr. Horn, you're doing something, what are you doing over there?
Mr. Kispin.
I'm not going to fall on my sword over this, but I will reserve the right to say I told you so later.
You had used a word a little earlier in the conversation, that instead of like mandate, you'd use the word like task, which tends to be a very discreet thing, like fulfill a specific task mandated by, you know, and the task would be to review. I don't, it just sounds more discreet than this whole thing about, you know, a mandate or a requirement, which, okay, I just a suggestion.
Is that in relation to what school board, the school board would assign?
Yeah, see, I think we give them tasks.
Yeah.
It, it seems like the word task, because that really was the tug and pull on this whole thing when we were in front of the judge, but these tasks are established to study in detail issues of importance to the school board and to fulfill school board tasks in addition to the regulatory task. Because that, that's the language that's in the, what the judge used, but, and to me, as closely as we could align with what he said may be helpful, so that, because we did send this to the petitioners before today, so.
And to me, again, the, the term task is very discreet in terms of its.
So you could say task mandated by.
The school board?
State law and regulation of the State Board of Education. And that means it would only be those.
Those specific things.
Narrowing the thing to specific tasks laid out by state law and Board of Education regulation.
Okay.
Related to advisory committees. And then that would narrow it even further. How about that?
All right. I'm, so. The operative word in the, in the regulation is, talks about the functions of local advisory committees. So there's another noun that's out there.
This, this attempts to track with that language, Mr. Kispin. The new, as you look on the screen, lines 37 through 39.
And performing functions mandated by include fulfilling any state requirements.
Well, I think it's hard to fight, fight the, the language of the regulation, so I think that's, that's, that works, that gets us there.
Works for me.
Okay, so that, so that you can see where that tracks after the word regulations, it then goes on to say on an annual basis, the school board will give direction for tasks to be completed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you've got, you've got dupe language there, so.
Yeah, we'll clean all this up, this is, this is straight whiteboard, because this is not our.
Understood, okay, all right.
Actually, we can, we can do this here. We'll back this back up.
The only thing I would say is that, that, the red line text now That, the red line text now, it doesn't distinguish about the state mandated committees, so I don't want to say as, as may be mandated, or something like that.
No, I'm.
But if you're happy with that.
Well, I think, because, again, I shared with you that our policy, over the years, has grown beyond what the VSB language was at some point, so the establishment of the committees is done here in A, as Ms. Carney pointed out, so I don't believe the language to say, we've established it and fulfilled our responsibility, also needs to be here.
No, but the only thing is, not all committees have mandated Board of Education regulated requirements.
So you could just put, same here, they say.
As may.
As may be.
As may be, or if relevant, or.
There, that's fine. Okay. Okay.
Very good, thank you, Tom.
So.
Let me get back to.
Anything else?
Was all the trouble I had.
A little further down, advisory committees shall have their meetings, their minutes published on the division website.
Mm-hmm.
But. Publish division website.
I see where you're going to look at it. I don't, this is not, this may not be the copy, because we've been working on this one, so let's.
Okay.
Is that also the online copy? Do you know?
Or just says, publish division?
Right.
As opposed to publish on the division?
On the division.
I got to tell you, my formatting is all screwed up on this thing, so I can't even tell, but yeah, that's what mine says.
Yeah, it's missing an on, though.
Yes.
Got it. Fixed that.
Good catch. Anything else? Would someone?
So I moved that the school board suspended this policy of two readings and bring policy 512 as amended up for adoption at first reading.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. And with that, our brief meeting comes.
So we just suspended the first reading, now we actually have to approve the policy. So I moved that the school board adopt policy 512 as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now at 8:30, we are adjourned, so.